All right, so I was trying to do the math in the back of how many tables I would need, and now maybe we have one too many. But eventually, when we get to kind of an activity piece, I'm going to have you group into four people at a table, just so there's not the two and the one. And then that should work well. So, thank you for those of you that are coming back. Thank you for coming back. That's always a risk you take. If you're not good the first time, nobody wants to come back the second time. Or maybe you don't have a choice. So, I'm excited to be back with you. I had a chance to look through all of the information from those easel sheets from the last... How many of you were here for the first session? Most of you look familiar. Okay, we're gonna... I've put that into an Excel spreadsheet and done some sorting, and I'm going to share that hard copy form with you for the end of tonight. So, we will circle back on to what we did in session one tonight. But first, we're going to kind of take a step backward. So, our first session with the community and getting input and feedback was to be thinking kind of forward. What are some things that are really working? What are some things that maybe aren't working so well or could use some improvements? And what are some things we'd like to perhaps start? Or at least, look into starting? So, that's all future-driven. I'd like to take a step back and have us really ground ourselves in the mission and vision for your district. Moving forward, that is very essential, that you're keeping in mind the things that are most important to your district, which are the students and their learning. And within your mission and vision, you've outlined some other things as well. So, we are not going to start from scratch tonight and create a new mission and vision. So, you can all breathe a sigh of relief, because that's no fun for anyone. What we are going to do is take a look at what you currently have and talk about whether it's still representative of the district as it is now. I think it's been many years since you've looked at that, and things change. Board members change, staff changes, the community at large changes. So, we want to make sure that that is still representing what you'd like it to represent. So, that's the first thing we're going to do tonight, is look at our vision, mission, and goals. And then the second piece tonight is what we call context mapping. And I talked a little bit about this before, but an activity that helps us look at all the things outside the walls of the school that are impacting the work that you do inside the walls of the school. That information, I will take back with me and create a graphic, and that helps us the next session. Again, just to ground ourselves in what we have control over, what we don't have control over, to keep our discussions really focused on those things that we can control and change. And then, at the very end, we're going to review that input that will position us well for how the priorities and input that were shared from the first session will lead us into the third session, where the group will be setting some strategic priorities. Again, those big-picture, high-level strategic priorities for the next three years or so. Any questions? It'll be a little bit more listening tonight, but, and not quite as brain taxing as the last one. I won't push you guys quite so hard as I did last week. All right, so we talked last session about visioning, and how that's a little bit different than a traditional strategic planning process. So, now we're in the midst of systems planning, systems visioning. And tonight, we're going to be looking in this part. So, understanding the set of problems. I didn't make this picture, I wouldn't have used the word "problem", because I honestly do think if there's a problem, it's really just an opportunity. It's an opportunity to do something better, to try something different, and to improve the system. But you do need to understand the context in which you're doing your planning and your visioning in order to move forward. So, tonight, there's not going to be any right or wrong answers. We're truly just thinking about the context that we're working in. And from that, you can move into looking at the future and setting strategic directions, strategic priorities, and planning for years down the road. And then eventually, that cycles back to the leadership team. I don't know if your teachers have PLCs, but it might get into that area and down into the classroom, of really implementing those strategic priorities. So, as we go through this process, tonight and next week, keeping in mind that everyone already has a full plate. We're already doing a ton of great things. We're not trying to just add work for the sake of adding work so that we have a nice-looking strategic plan. But we're picking strategic directions, strategic priorities, that are really going to move the district forward. So, these are the things that are going to help you get toward your vision and mission faster, better, easier, more efficiently, whatever it may be, toward those goals. Sometimes, that means taking things off the plate, which is one of the reasons we did the stop activity last time. You can't just always do more, 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 more. Sometimes, you have to take some things off that aren't moving you toward your vision and mission. All right, so we're going to start with... Well, I'm going to call it audible. We're actually going to start with your mission. Did I use that term right? I don't really know what an audible is. In football, isn't that when you change the play along the way? Okay, good. I don't watch football. So, we're actually going to talk about the mission statement first, and then we're going to go back to the vision statement. Can you even read those words in the back? Okay, good. The mission statement is supposed to articulate what you're about. So, when it says "highlight key priorities", that does not mean that it's a paragraph with bullets in it of all of your strategic priorities. But it does mean that it should... If somebody is reading it, they would understand what the main points of your district, the main focus areas of your district are. And it really should drive what you're doing. So, for example, if there's a big decision to be made, it should be something that you look at when you're discussing the pros and cons, the reasons to do this, the reasons to do that. You should come back to your mission statement intentionally and say, "Does this meet our vision? Does this match our vision? Does it help us get closer to it?" And literally, like, whatever setting is, read that mission statement and say, "Yes, this moves us closer to that", or "No, this doesn't feel like it aligns very well." So, it should be a real tool that you use in decision-making. So, this is your current mission statement. "Cannon Falls Public Schools, partnering with families and community, will provide a nurturing, challenging, and inspiring environment to educate all individuals to be lifelong learners and responsible, productive citizens." Did anyone get a goosebump or two? No, really? Nobody? I got a couple. I really am a strategic planning geek. Does it resonate? Does it feel like, yes, this is what we're here to do? Or are there any pieces there where you're like, "It doesn't represent this", or "It feels like it's missing something"? Now, it doesn't mean you get to go home sooner just because you don't talk. Technically, it does mean that, but this is the opportunity.
Let's see that line, "Partnering with families and community", we talked a lot about how much, like Gemini has donated, how many tens of thousands of dollars. I wonder if there should be some sort of reference to the business or industry population in town, unless that fits into the community part of it, but not all of them are.
Thoughts about that? Could everybody hear that?
I actually remember being part of the process, and one of the things that we talked about was, how do you use a word to be inclusive rather than exclusive? And we talked at length about community meaning many things, because there's many organizations and many entities, business, profit, nonprofit, all of that, that's involved in supporting what we do here and helping us. That whole idea of the village, that word "community" was intended to be all-encompassing. But it is a really good point, because I do think that one of the things we take for granted in our community is the support that we get from nonprofits, like the Ed Foundation, the PTO, the businesses who donate money, like Gemini, to keep these things going. It's one of the things we don't acknowledge, I think, and celebrate. And it is amazing what we do, what we have here from those organizations. But I do remember that, that that was a part of the conversation. Community was meant to be all-encompassing.
Other thoughts about that? The feeling of the word "community" kind of capsulating everything? Or whether an additional word such as "business", or "supporters", or whatever it might be being added in?
Actually, as I think about it, "community" is probably better, because then you don't run the risk of leaving somebody out.
So, during this part, I tend to throw out ideas. They are not meant to... Like, because they come out of the facilitator's mouth, they must be good ones, you know? But, so I throw this out. What if it was partnering with families and our supportive community? Kind of gets in that idea of the community being here to support the district. I don't know that it's necessary. I agree that community kind of does overarching say that, but if you wanted to get the idea of supportive in there, that would be one way to do it.
I feel like that might draw off the tongue a little bit.
Which? True, you're not going to partner with an unsupportive community member. Okay? So, how many people feel good just partnering with families and community does the trick? Okay. Anything else you'd like to throw out for discussion? Mr. Sampson, as new superintendent, do you have anything you'd like to share? Not to put you on the spot.
I think for me, the mission piece is something that everyone needs to buy into, not only that it's in the room, but also people in the community, the stakeholders as well. Can we get behind that? And are we able and capable of doing these things to strive to reach our ultimate vision, guess, of what we are doing? Is the question I always ask. Is that something that we're all willing to get behind that statement? Because sometimes, like you say, whenever I get into tough situations, you always look back at something like this to see if we're being guided in the right... Down the right road.
I will say too, and like I said, we're going to circle back to the vision, but a vision statement is often much more aspirational. Almost like, if we reach our vision, there's no purpose for us anymore. That will never happen with a school, but... So, you're reaching further with a vision. You want your mission statement to be achievable and yet a challenge. Yeah.
Kind of like that. It's your base, where you don't want to go anything below that.
Yep. Exactly.
Kind of, that's just kind of my two cents. Last week, strategic planning, and then from kind of what an emphasis has been for a lot of things is something about safe. And now, having my own kids in the school, it may feel safe in an environment that's more likely to be nurtured and challenged and inspired. If they're worrying about how their day is going, they're probably not going to go towards another goal.
So, to provide a safe and nurturing.
So, "safe and nurturing", is that what someone said? And then, removing "challenging and inspiring"? That's why I clarified. So, "will provide a safe and nurturing, challenging and inspiring environment".
How about a "safe, nurturing, challenging, and inspiring"?
Yeah.
Okay. I now know where to place all the commas. You know, along those same lines, another big topic last week was whatever phrase, but "fiscally stable", or "accountable", some schools do have something along those lines in their mission statements. I'm not saying one way or the other. I just throw it out there, because it was a discussion... One of our big five last week. It's not quite as exciting to say. Inspiring and stable.
Although, very important, and don't take this phrase wrong, but is that the reason why we are here?
Probably not.
I just want to throw that out there, and again, don't take that wrong. But it is very important, but I don't know if that's the reason why we are here.
Yep.
I think maybe it would go along with our vision. Or goals.
And the goals.
Goal-setting to help us achieve what we want to do.
Yep.
And to make sure we can provide all of the...
Yeah, that's more of a means to your purpose.
I think you can kind of wrap it into some idea of stewardship in there. If you think of all of the resources that we are accountable for, financial, but also, you know, looking at all the other resources that are a part of the school, the personnel, the students, the staff. So, I don't know. I don't know how to put that into a mission statement, but I like throwing out ideas.
Yep.
That could fit in with partnering with families and community, and in good stewardship. I mean, you could put that... Because I do think that is one thing that, as a district, we have guided ourselves on and that we do a really good job of, which is using resources responsibly. We work really hard to do that.
So, I'm going to actually type, so you can see it. So, where were you partnering with families and community in good stewardship here? Like that?
Did you say "in good stewardship"?
Or "in good stewardship", that works too. Less words is always better in a mission statement. Otherwise, you're all...
I almost keep the comma, "community", and started "good stewardship" after that.
I'm wondering if... So, we're going to look at the goals, too. If it ends up fitting better there when we are talking about. So, I'm just going to highlight this, and let's circle back to it. Is that okay? Any other thoughts?
I really like the emphasis on "all individuals". I think with our community ed offerings, and it's really not just a... I mean, the school isn't just the kids anymore, it's the community. I like that "all individuals" can be educated.
I do, too. All right. I'll save that. I did a session once where I forgot to save everything. Luckily, I had a ton of post-it notes and could recreate the work. But I learned my lesson. All right. So, the next slide here just kind of gives a checkpoint. Is our mission statement "short and sharply focused"? We made it a little longer, but it is well-focused. Is it clear and easily understood? Check. Defines why we do what we do. So, why are you here? But it doesn't prescribe how you will do it. "It's sufficiently broad", is the next check mark. So, you don't want it to be too prescriptive, where you're bound by specifics. "Provides direction for doing the right things or making decisions", for sure. " addresses opportunities, matches our competence, inspires our commitment". I would say it does all those things. And if someone who isn't as familiar with your mission reads it and does get goosebumps, that's inspiring, so, kudos. And it says what, in the end, we want to be remembered for. So, you're producing responsible, productive citizens. All right. Last chance for any comments. All right. So, I'm going to circle back to the vision statement. So, our vision is broader. So, this is not the "what we do", but the "why we do it". So, kind of like I said before, it's aspirational in focus. You know, if there were no barriers, and you could do everything that you wanted to do for every student, what is your "why"? It should give a sense of purpose. If a mission statement gives you goosebumps, the vision statement should give you a couple extra. It should therefore be motivational and inspiring to staff. And it should also have embedded accountability, so be very clear. So, it's talking about the impact of what you're doing. You know, with a school district, these are a little bit easier, because you have a very clear purpose for being. And we all kind of know the end-of-the-day "why", but most districts, there's more to it than that as well. So, you want your vision to motivate, to give you momentum, to push you further, and what you intend to be, so how you wish to be perceived. Okay, so if we look at the vision as it is now, it says, "The vision of Cannon Falls Public Schools is to create a safe learning environment that promotes high student achievement in a way that all students are excited about learning. The vision also includes managing and utilizing resources efficiently, expecting our students to be good, healthy citizens, and creating and maintaining productive educational relationships with the members of the community and ISD 252." Any goosebumps?
Sounds like you just repeated the mission statement.
Kinda.
Seems redundant. What are we looking for? What's different about it, I guess, what I need to know?
So, keeping in mind that the mission is the "what", and your vision is your "why". So... So, I always want to be careful of giving feedback, because I don't want to say anything negative about what exists. But this is an extremely long vision statement, and it's two sentences. Ideally, you would have a vision statement that your staff could memorize and remember. I don't think anybody's memorizing this. And you want it to be, again, that even more aspirational than the mission statement. So, I kind of felt the same way, that a lot of the same pieces that are in the mission statement are also in the vision statement. And then, the second sentence, I love it, but those are more goals. Those are more your... How you're going to do your "why", right? So, those are my two cents. I feel like it's a little long and a little focused on the "what" instead of the vision. Other thoughts?
I feel like "good, healthy citizens", I kind of want to know what that means.
What is the "good"?
Are there any pieces that people really resonate with? Like, yes, this phrase, or those words, particular words, really do talk about our "why"?
Promoting the high student achievement.
I almost ended it with the first sentence. Just maybe tweak a little bit, but the first sentence sums it up.
Because I agree, that second sentence is a very important thing, but are more... They're not really going that wide. It's more of a goal or...
When I think of vision, I don't... That first part that says to create a safe learning environment, that piece to me seems like that's mission. So, I would take that out. And then, if you take something good from our mission to carry over between the two, I like that word "inspiring".
I do, too. I think if we're going to ask ourselves why...
Yeah, like, "The vision of Cannon Falls Public Schools inspires students..."
Inspire?
High student achievement.
Inspiring.
Inspires high student achievement.
High school, or creative, high student achievement. Creative thinking.
Creative thinking.
Can we change "students" to "learners", and that, I think, is more all-encompassing? Looking for a word that would do that.
And you would take that out?
Oops, sorry. Yep, I just don't wanna delete it, cause it might come back for the goals. Make it a little bigger.
No, I meant...
Oh.
I think you're watching, the learning, learners excited about learning.
Yeah, that too. But otherwise, Cannon Falls Public Schools inspires creative thinking and that promotes.
I'd take that "that."
You take out "that."
Is it promoting students to be high-achieving or is it promoting to reach their maximum potential?
That would be...
Can I throw out an idea?
Yeah.
How about, "The vision of Cannon Falls Schools is to inspire learners to be their best now and in the future."
Nice.
And if we, if you use that word, "to be their best," that kinda encapsulates the whole creative thinking and high student achievement.
Yeah. It's very achievable for every student to do their best, do their best.
Do you wanna keep something as, "to be excited about it"?
I feel grammatically like there needs to be a word between "best" and "now." Like, their best both now and in the future, like adding the word "bullets" or something, their best selves.
Yep, is there a comma between now?
I don't know, I would say a dash, but I don't know if that achieves their best.
Couple people said "best selves."
How about "do their best" instead of "be their best"?
To do their best.
To inspire, "do their best." Something with learners.
Is "do their best" or is "achieve"?
To achieve. "The vision of Cannon Falls is to inspire learners to..." If you use "achieve," there definitely needs to be a word after "best."
That says the "why" to your mission statement. As it is.
If you start putting in specifics after "best," then it's gonna get long. And we're gonna miss something for somebody in there.
So, do we like "be" or "achieve"? Cause I've heard a split there. To become their best?
Become now?
You like what? To... So, we've had the word "strive" thrown out, "become their best." Be their best, yep. And then is the "dash"? How does that read? What's that? The "dash"? It's definitely much more of a vision statement. It's very aspirational. And if it's on a bumper sticker. How many people are resonating with it? So, the question was, do we even need the last part?
I can understand that part, but then I think maybe we need a different word than "best." Cause I don't feel like it should stop there. I don't know why, it just doesn't feel... To reach their fullest potential? Or something like that? Do you know what I'm saying? Like, it just feels like "best" is not...
To reach their fullest.
To reach their potential.
Full potential.
Full, fullest.
Full potential.
What's that? "Inspire learners to reach their full potential now and in the future."
If you took "full" out, would that change anything? Yeah, it might be, that might be like a...
Your potential is your potential. Full potential is potential.
Right, you're right.
Total potential.
Utmost. I feel like "potential" is more, is more of an inspirational word than "best."
And it doesn't necessarily have like a top, cause your potential can only grow.
Yep. And yeah, I mean, by adding that "full" in there, it does kind of, like, whoa, how do I know when I hit my "full"? I feel like I'm at my potential. It turns into a nice tagline too of, you know, "Inspire learners to reach their potential." I see lots of marketing uses for that as well. How do we feel now? I got some goosebumps, if that means anything. So, give me a thumbs up if you're feeling good about it.
I'm looking at it, you could easily take the word "vision" and replace it with the word "goal," or your goal statement, not vision statement.
But we're making a vision statement.
It's not a quantitative measure.
Okay, well, let's sit with it for a little bit, and we'll circle back to this too. I think you're getting there, if you're not already there. Alright. Oops. Okay, so, also in existence are several goals that you have previously written for your school, the district. And I just, we, again, we don't need to wordsmith these, but I do want to make sure that they capture the essence of big-picture goals and that there's nothing glaringly missing. So, I'm gonna take you through all of them, just so that you remember what they all are, and then we'll go through one at a time, okay? So, the first is, "We will promote high student achievement that stresses successful, positive experiences for all of our students. The district supports staff development activities such as professional learning communities, developing and aligning curriculum to state and national standards, and workshops that further enhance educational opportunities for students and staff." Second one. "Cannon Falls Area Schools is committed to creating a productive learning environment for students. This includes improving curriculum, maintaining facilities, keeping pace with technology, and following a long-range facility plan. Cannon Falls Area Schools will continue to utilize resources efficiently and continue to build a fund balance for monthly operational expenses in order to create a fiscal balance of resources and personnel. Cannon Falls Area Schools will maintain and create productive relationships with members of the community as well as employees of ISD 252. This will include curriculum, wellness committee, parent, and financial committees to keep the public involved and informed." So, those are the four goals that you currently have. Again, these are higher-level goals that then trickle down to more specific action plans. So, my first question would be, "How do you envision utilizing these goals in the next iteration of the strategic plan?" Cause I don't wanna just have them hanging about from before if they're not going to feed into the next. That makes sense?
None of these goals, unless I just completely missed it, include like a safe environment.
You're correct. Productive and positive. So, before we go too far into wordsmithing, I wanna ask that bigger-picture question first of, "How to envision using these goals?" Yes?
I would envision using these goals as, the board would set the goals, pass them through me, I would pass them out through my admin team into the departments, who would set goals off of that piece. And into the, eventually they would make it into the classrooms by building and by grade level, so that we're all going in the same direction to meet the goals. Have a good understanding, obviously. Some of the components of the goals may not fit everywhere, but we would create action plans to help meet those goals.
Okay. And then after next Monday, we'll have some strategic priorities, some of which may fit under one of these goal areas. I'm guessing most of them probably will. Do you have an idea of how those two kinda interact, what... So, strategic priority would probably... So, then looking at these goals is probably premature. Okay, you guys are gonna get out of here earlier than you thought. We're gonna come back to that. That's kind of what I was thinking, but it's something, I think, in the next week, if you could kind of be thinking about those goals. Because... So, I will circle back a minute. So, this is like many goals within a goal. It's, it's not prescriptive in how you do these things, but it's a pretty big goal statement. So, that was, one of the things I was going to have us talk a little bit about tonight is, especially from a board level, how much directive do you wanna give within the goals? Or do you want it to be broader? Where these are really strategies, in my opinion. Strategies are objectives to meet a goal. Versus the way this is written as a district goal, it really, I don't know, it could go either way. It's nice because it says, "The district and the board supports these things." And we want to continue to support those things. So, it's a, if I was a teacher reading that, I would be like, oh, that's great that the board is really supporting my professional development and my professional growth so that I can help my students get high achievement. But thinking from a strategic planner's perspective, these pieces typically would fall more under like an action plan of things you will do to address the goal. So, we'll come back to that next Monday, but something to just kinda keep in the back of your mind this week when you've got nothing else to do, to think about kind of the purpose behind the goals. If they're, cause maybe "goal" is the wrong word. Maybe they're just guiding statements from the board versus a goal. So, we can play with that a little bit next week.
Is the number that we have, is that normal? Or like, would it be better to have like one more and be able to condense the section? You know, like, I don't know, like, what's the, what's the norm?
There is no "normal," but one, one thing we could look at doing, because last time, we kinda came up with those five big buckets, which, these all align under one of those. I think it would leave one that doesn't have a goal statement or belief statement, or whatever you may call it. We could kind of align them with those categories. Okay. Any other ideas? Cause that will help guide me in preparing for next week too. How about we take a five-minute stretch break? Does that sound good? Then we'll come back for some action. You don't get to sit there and stare at me anymore. Now, you gotta work.
So, I've already talked quite a bit about context mapping, but one thing to keep in mind as we have these conversations, which I will be explaining, we're just talking about the way things are right now. So, we're not looking at the historical context of the district, and we're not looking at things that might be on the horizon, or I read an article that this might happen, or, you know, someday MBE is gonna pass this legislation. We're just talking about things that are happening now. So, we'll be taking a look at both factors and trends in specific areas that are impacting the work of the school district. As I mentioned before, there's no right or wrong answers. Much like last week, I wanna get a brain dump. So, as many things as you can think of in each of the areas that we'll be talking about, we wanna get those recorded. There will be a topic assigned to each of your tables, but then we will do a report back, and other people will have the opportunity to add things that they didn't hear from the report. So, you're not, the four of you at your table are not responsible for knowing everything there is to know about the topic that you're assigned. But what we're gonna do is brainstorm everything you can think of with the topic. Again, only things that directly impact the work of your school. So, I am gonna ask one person, and I didn't bring any blank paper, but if one person has a piece of paper that they could use to record, you don't have to record the whole conversation, but just a phrase or a short sentence of the topic that you're talking about. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I need to print your paper there. So we'll have time, and then one person, so not the person that takes the notes, but somebody else who's willing to be a spokesperson, will share back. So the person who writes has to write legibly so that the spokesperson can read it back. Did I turn the mic back on? So you will share back slowly because I will be writing these things down, typing them. And then we'll stop after that. Everybody else, if you have anything to add to the list, we will get that added to the list, and then we will move on to the next topic. Questions about the process. Very straightforward. You don't have to get up and move in circles like last time or anything like that. Thank you for getting paper for us. So the end result is a graphic like this. So here you are with all your vision and mission exceeding here in the middle of the picture. There's educational trends, so this would be things that are, you know, one I can think of is the drive toward more career and tech ed. Maybe something around technology, one-to-one technology in the classroom, those types of trends. And that's how short I'm talking about, just a phrase. I don't need to say, I have to try to fit everything you talk about into this type. So educational trends will be one top point. Uncertainties. So these are things that probably do dip into the future a little bit, so, you know, how might the potential impeachment of our president impact your district? Let's not use that one. But it's uncertainties like that. You know, if your school was going out for a referendum, that would be an uncertainty that would impact your district. The economic climate. So this is specific to, you know, Cannon Falls as well as our region, as well as the nation, but think a little bit more local here. So things that, you know, if you've got, if you're overly reliant on one donor, or if you... I know some districts have very few businesses and industries within their community, so that's something that they have to deal with. So these are the different things. The workforce shortage. This will be technology factors. So it could be anything from, you know, having to have policies for kids that are bringing their devices into the classroom to dealing with families that don't have technology at home. You know, I'm not going to give you all the answers, but things like that would fall under technology. And then politics. So there's a lot of unknowns. It might be an uncertainty and a politics with a lot of elections coming up in 2020 and what that might mean for our state and for some of our mandates. So questions about the different topics? So I am just going to arbitrarily, one, two, three, four, five, six. The other one I want to add that I've done sometimes is student needs. So what do students come to school needing and expecting for both their social and emotional well-being today, but also in the future? So, you know, they need to be prepared for college and career, those types of things. So we're going to add student needs. So we'll start up here with economic, or I'm sorry, educational trends, the front here. Back there, we'll do uncertainties. Economic climate, middle. Technology factors, and the far back. Middle there, politics. And the front here, student. Remember, you may have to come up with an exhaustive list because others can find it absolutely corporate. So one recorder, spokesperson, lots of brain work. Ready? All right, I'm going to pull you back together. Good work. How many people felt like you were doing it wrong? I heard more people than one say that. There is no right or wrong. You are all doing a great job. Okay. So let's start with... Let's go backwards and start with student needs. Who's our spokesperson? Speak nice and loud so everyone can hear you, but I'm going to type it up, too.
We have nurturing environment. Attention. Safe environment slash security. Post-graduation preparedness. Healthy environment. Mental health support. Technology guidance for balance. Their basic needs, food, clothing, supplies. Interventions. Social skills and interpersonal navigation. Independent thinking. Communication skills. Global understanding of the world. And learning from failure.
Awesome. Round of applause for that group. All right. So again, student needs. So what are students needing from their school experience? Anything else to add to this, or questions that you may have about what any of these mean? I'll make them a little bit bigger here.
High-quality curriculum.
High-quality teachers.
Can I just put the group then by interventions?
For what they need, whether it's learning difficulty or...
Or being exceptional or a high learner. For like individualized?
Yeah.
So as we look at this list, what is not within our control? If anything, that wasn't a guiding question. Anything?
Did you ask what's not within? I think the basic needs would border. People try to bridge gaps as they can.
Yep. Okay, so that definitely happens outside of the school. Anything else for this one? Great list. Fantastic. I added that one because, and I've used it before, but I think it's so good to keep ourselves grounded on who's your customer and why we're here and why, again, back to that vision, why we're doing what we're doing and how we're doing it and what those strategic priorities are and what we're moving toward. It's all for the students. There's a lot of other stakeholders that have needs, that have expectations on the school district, you know, from your parents, your community members, the staff. I could list a lot of stakeholders, but the most important are the students. So I like to add that in there. Great work. Who had politics? You? All right.
Unfunded mandates.
Oh, yes.
School board election. LGBTQ policies, federal and state. Changes to Minnesota's standards.
Good grief.
And Cannon Falls economic development.
Just in general, or is that an entity? How many board seats will be up for election this year? Do you know?
One.
One? Just curious.
We have one coming up, and then we'll have three next year.
Wow. All right. Oh, sorry. Round of applause. Good work. Anything to add? So politics that impact your school.
Changing demographics and aging community.
House.
Referendums or taxes.
I don't know how you say this, but the switching over of control of the legislature versus the governorship, so on. And then all bets. Because depending on who's in, you can get a good idea of what we can expect from our politics. Particole. Yep. Well, you could probably even call it a very partisan, instead of a bipartisan working environment, you're very partisan right now across the country, state.
Which of these things do you have control over?
Can I add one?
Oh, sure.
The teachers union in their negotiations?
Anything else to add? Anything you feel like you have control over?
So do you think we should add all bargaining units in their negotiations? I mean, it's not just the teachers? Great.
So a lot of times when we do strategic planning, especially for public agencies of any sort, there can be a tendency to get hung up in those unfunded mandates and just it's frustrating, it's ridiculous, and it definitely impacts the work that you do and the money that you have to do it, but you can't change it. And there's things that you just have to do, so you just do them. So in those cases, then, it's looking for ways to make those things more efficient potentially, ways that, you know, leaderships at the regional level could also get more, do more advocacy at the legislative level. And we've got actually a very active group of superintendents in our region that do quite a bit of work with our legislators, so that's good. Doing education around the time for board elections so people know what the issues are and that sort of thing. But ultimately, most of these things, there's no control. So finding those pieces that you can influence and impact without changing the rules or requirements or the things that are happening. Does that make sense?
I think you could even add, for the advocacy, as a separate thing, you know, we do have control.
Yes, we can advocate all we want. We can do that.
Sometimes they even listen a little. All right. Before we go down the rabbit hole of politics, let's talk about technology, technology factors.
So first one would be the one-to-one technology initiative. And probably a separate one could go with that is just updating devices for students and staff. Next one would be updating infrastructure. And then you can put a dash and include wiring, access points, filtering would be part of that as well. Next one would be teacher technology goals framed by SAMR, S-A-M, by SAMR model. Next one would be resources to fund needed technologies. And then resources to fund new and innovative technologies. And you could put a dash behind that, like the example is given AR VR. It could be one career-specific trade tech. Next one we could get into is informing families of our digital tools. Next one would be assisting families in technology management. And these two kind of go with it, so you could put a dash, but we talked about the need to understand the screen time balance and purposeful learning versus mindless use. I don't know if that, how that goes anywhere. And the last two, we kind of got into, that we have some new issues with responding to academic integrity, inappropriate use, and finding a balance with the need to use... and finding a balance with the need to use tech for learning. And we also mentioned that our tech staff continues to respond to student and staff and family needs.
Wonderful. Round of applause. Other things to add or anything to clarify?
About lack of internet at, in homes, kind of students?
Connectivity and role.
Yeah.
Efforts by the state.
My fingers are not working tonight.
What are home days?
Online.
Online.
Anything else?
I think for me, the biggest thing is what is the next big thing that we need to be planning for? The decade ago is one-to-one technology. So what is the next?
So as we think about control, is there anything on this list that is not within our control? Some of it's definitely a challenge with, with money and that sort of thing. So when you talk about the academic integrity part, is that kind of along the lines of plagiarism and, okay. I just wanted to make sure I understood. Okay. Anything else for technology? Great work. Economic climate, we already clapped for. Thank you for the reminder, though. Economic climate's in the middle.
The school funding formula, rural versus metro. Fund balance. And then, under that, competitive staff wages. And facility maintenance and upkeep. Classroom funding. For supplies, curriculum, furniture. Family and community economic status. Which would include housing, childcare needs, transportation needs. And then business and employment opportunities. Or unemployment. The community's tax base.
Now we can applaud again. Good job. Anything we'd like to add to the economy and how it's impacting our school?
How does the trade work with China?
I don't know.
Federal policy with the stock market? Are we, is there a crash somewhere that we're not something?
When you need to hire, do you find a shortage? Do you have, she was hiring, filling positions? Anything else? Is your community growing or declining in population, do you know? Or just kind of staying? Anything else? What on here do you have control of? Facilities? Classroom funding? Yeah, pretty mixed bag. Not, not a lot of control in a lot of those areas either. Good work. All right, we're getting there. Deleted my bullet. All right, uncertainties.
We've got enrollment. School board changing. Staffing, teachers, administrators, support staff. Teacher licensing. Economics was the biggest factor that we had, state and local and federal. Funding formula, number of free and reduced lunch costs. Inflation, costs of goods, fuel, electricity, water.
Well, you guys slid on. Your last day of free and reduced lunch.
Put economics on there. I put inflation, costs of goods, fuel, electricity, water.
Stop.
Sorry, I slid on.
Continue?
Continue. Special education costs and needs. Insurance costs. State and federal mandates. Legislative updates, court rulings. Referendums. Technology changes. Workforce changes. Facilities and transportation costs. If something unexpected happens, maybe a vehicle, you're not able to drive a vehicle anymore, a bus breaks down and can't be used and has to be replaced. Maybe the HVAC system goes down and half a building or, and how do, what are you going to do to replace it? Where, where is that money going to come from? So.
Knock on wood.
But, so facilities would be, facility and transportation, I think is our last one. Community support, community support.
Great. Clapping for them, please. All right, anything to add? What else is uncertain? How much there will be? How many snow days there will be this year? I know it was said in jest, but it's supposed to be a bad winter. What else?
Formula. Funding formula or something like that.
Oh, I knew I missed one thing. That must be what I missed. That was right around the inflation and free and reduced lunch costs. Anything else? Anyone see anything on here that we can change or we have control over? All right, and last, but certainly not least, let's talk about educational factors.
Should we forget factors? We did trends.
Trends.
Makes a difference or not. Okay, we have individualized learning. Standards-based focus. Technology-based. Some examples were WTEC. WETC. And ITV. Social, emotional learning. Example, whole child. Non-traditional learning environments. Like flexible seating, flexible learning in classrooms. Career and tech ed focus. PSEO, college and the school, and CLAP.
What was that? What's that?
Was that transplacement?
College-level entrance. Or exam.
That's one sort of P. That gives me an idea. Okay.
Concurrent enrollment. AP classes. And collaboration among districts, both in the area and statewide. That's all, Shirley.
Lovely. Round of applause. Other ideas to add to educational trends?
Safety and security has become kind of a big issue in like what I'm thinking of addressing bullying and then also Alex.
It's not really a trend, but extra recruiting, would that be?
Sure.
For those of you keeping track at home, CLAP is college-level examination program.
Program.
Standardized testing.
KLCs? KPIs? And responsive action?
Education is becoming more and more dated. For good and for bad.
Medical help? Supports?
RTI, MTSS.
What's MTSS?
Multi-tier systems of support. RTI.
Anything else?
How about you should put something about like cultural awareness or response events? There's our cultural competency component in life here now.
Anything else? I mean, that's enough, but. So how many of these things do you have control over? Almost everything. You can't do anything about standardized testing. This is one area where you really do have a lot more local control and authority to make decisions and changes based on what's best for your district and for your students. I'm glad I ended on that one, a little bit more uplifting one.
Can I change one that was?
You bet, yeah.
Or, and if everyone's okay with it, it's the quality, teacher, teacher qualities.
High-quality teachers was down here.
Yeah, and could we put slash staff?
Yeah, I think that's a good, good clarification. They say that every student needs one caring adult in their life, and whether that's a teacher, a staff member, or somebody outside of the school, but. This is a fantastic list. My job is now to make it fit on this sheet with an extra arrow that I added. It'll be on like poster board or something. Well, or it'll be so tiny, you won't be able to read it. I'll see what I can do. Well, that is fantastic work. Let me save that. So again, the, the purpose of that is really just to, it's pretty eye-opening when you start thinking about all the things a district nowadays is expected to do. At one point, and I wish I could find it, there was, I had a poster that was, was printed on long, narrow paper. It was kind of the history of education and, you know, back when the one-room schoolhouse was, it was the expectations of, of school, you know, teach students. And then each year, as things have been added in and different mandates, and, and now it was, you know, half the, the poster was, it's basically the school is expected to raise our children. And that's unrealistic. But for some of our students, it's reality that they don't have that at home or any other place in their life. And this is their one safe place to be. So again, just to think about all those things that are frustrating and are very impactful on the work you do, but you can't change it. So as we plan forward, let's focus on the things that we can change and we can impact and influence. And it will be a much more successful goal session and then down into action planning. So basically, I wanted to, we took all of those pages that you did last time and typed them all up, like I said, into an Excel spreadsheet. And we have them here as pictures too. And then you will receive those next week as my gift back to you in case you'd like to laminate the giant posters or whatever. But no, there was so many great ideas. And the, the dot exercise was very helpful in helping to start prioritizing what some of those ideas were based on the opinions of the people in the room. And I've said it before, we can't do it all. So where do we start? What has the most impact? What's the most feasible? Combine those to set some direction for the future, which is really going to be our focus for next Monday. Next steps. So what I would like to do is share the the Excel spreadsheets in paper format with you to take home with you. Again, I know you're all busy people, but if you have time to look at this between now and next Monday, kind of look at the things that were prioritized. Think about those goals that have been set in the past and, and how they fit within these buckets. That will be our partial, partial focus next Monday. And then the final product from the next session will be to actually have three or so strategic priorities that influence those, those goals and priorities. So the way that this is set up, each page is one of the buckets, one of the topic areas. So this one is academic excellence. Everything here is the start, the stop, and the continue. And then it's been sorted, this is the number of dots, so this would be individual priority placing, so it's been sorted by the number of dots. And then the star means, you remember as you were moving from table to table, if you agreed with a statement that was already on there, you could star it. So this indicates if there was a star on it. So the stars and the, the dots pretty much correlate, but not across the board. So there's one for each of those, so we'll pass these out. Any questions about the process thus far or what is yet to come? Or what do you feel like my description hasn't touched on? Like, oh, I thought we were going to do blank and we, doesn't sound like we're going to do it. And we've still got 40 minutes if you'd like to hang out. I'm sure I can blabber on about something, but otherwise, I'm done with you. So thank you for your hard work. It will all come together next Monday.